Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, and we're in the middle of an Indian summer. Let the record show that councilors are here except for Odie Campos, who they had a family medical emergency this afternoon. He called and let us know that he could not be with us today. In the minutes, before we approve the minutes, I made a mistake in the last council meeting. Councilor Martin Willis had let me know that she was going to be absent from the meeting. She was attending the funeral for her father. And that's why it does show as excused. I talked to Karen after the meeting. I wanted you to just know that she did speak to me in advance. We did make the correction. I just wanted you to know why it showed that way in the minutes. Otherwise, and the minutes are correct, as far as I know them, do they make with your approvals? How was that? There was old mouthful there, wasn't it?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Under visitors' comments, I have Mr. Stephen Milt Means, who'd like to speak to us for a few minutes. Good evening. Step up to the podium here and good evening and welcome to City Council.
Yeah, thank you. My first time here. I've never been involved in this before.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Yes. I'm addressed by major safety problems, in my opinion. I'm, to start off with, I'm disabled. I can't drive, so I walk around everywhere. And it's, I mean, it's a, I can't walk across the street half the time without almost getting hit. I'm on the street, well, pretty much everywhere. People are just not paying attention. I'm not sure exactly why. Speeding is one factor. And I mean, I throw my hands up. Why are you almost getting ran over? And then they prick me off. And it wasn't even my fault, but it's, that's the main two issues. I walk a lot on sidewalks and people blocks. Is it illegal for vehicles to block sidewalks? I think it's public sidewalks, right? That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
But I mean, I can't, I almost get hit a couple times, have to go off the sidewalk in cars, especially G Street is the worst problem of people going 40, 45 mile an hour down that road. And I just live in Bridgewater Apartments there.
Okay.
I come out there walking and it's hazardous. I mean, it's, I don't understand it, but people's in a hurry, I guess, I guess, is mainly. And then cellphone issues. I mean, is it illegal to, on a cellphone, right? But people, I almost got hit twice, people on cellphones. I mean, it's, to me, it's more of a problem than other people, maybe. Now, that's why I'm as, I came here, I'm from Indiana to rehabilitate because I am disabled, but this is a major problem, in my opinion.
Okay. Great. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask our police chief to make, have his staff make contact with you and see if there's anything that can be done in that. Is that okay with you, chief? Okay, and we have your contact information here.
Yes.
And so I'm gonna let, let them make the connection. And I don't know quite, but there might be some things that may or may not be able to happen, and, but we will pass this on to make sure that somebody contacts you, and that'll be in the next few days, I'm gonna guess.
I have, I have talked to a couple of patrolmen, and they are aware of the situation and problem.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll have that follow up. Thank you for taking the time to come in.
Thank you.
And Brooke Jackson, did I get that right? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. I have started mobile outreach, and I am at the very beginning of this. It is registered with Oregon, and I will be filling out, I believe I need to register with the city as well as a business, and I'm applying for my nonprofit tax exempt status. Passer Dan at Cavalry Church is aware and has a flyer, and I've been passing some of them out at the Academy Building. Received the two-year-old community resource guide for Polk County, and I will be referencing, going through all of the websites and phone numbers to see which resources are available. And my goal is to, and I'll also be meeting at the SET meetings. I've got their schedule so that I can start attending those and possibly the training in six months. My goal is to, I've been in Independence for nine years. My goal is to stay based in Independence, but do mobile outreach services as well. And so I just wanted to make the introduction that I'm here, and though I'm small and my services are very limited, I just started my GoFundMe and I'm using my own funds for most everything, but just kind of make my presence known as I try and coordinate, and people might go, who are you and what are you doing? That, that's what I'm here to do, is to help. And I am friends with all of the homeless gentlemen in town. In fact, oftentimes you'll see me hanging out with them. They are very good friends of mine, and we take care of each other. And so that's basically my intent this evening, is just to let you know that that's what I'm starting, and I'm, I'm serious about it. So if I, if I don't register for something properly, if someone just lets me know, I know, I know Independence kind of loves its forms and different things and permits, and so I want to make sure I do that. And I'd love to meet with the Parks Department to see what options there might be available for long-term permits or things, so that I can get people showers, just to feel a little bit more human sometimes would be great. And there are no shower facilities here or laundry facility, there's laundry facilities, but they cost money. You know, Independence had to close a resource center. I'd like to kind of bridge that gap for people, if I can.
Great. Well, thank you for taking the time to come in, and good luck. Okay. I'm gonna keep us moving forward under reports. Just to remind everybody that it is the League of Oregon Cities this week. That was, that's always an exciting time. And I'm, and we had, the days have kind of collapsed a little bit on me, but the Hoppin Heritage Block Party, great event, although, I gotta tell you, it's a guaranteed way to bring rain.
Anymore.
There was a little bit of a shower.
It's a storm.
And I do want to compliment Councilor Morton for the great turnout that there was for the ghost walk. There was 1,000, 1,100?
1,100.
1,100 people, and it was a great time, so I liked a lot of the good things that happened.
Thank you for volunteering at it, too.
Well, it's the least I can do. It was, it's lots of fun. I really did enjoy it, and so I just wanted to do a shout out for that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep us moving for council liaison reports. Councilor Takeus, you have traffic and historic preservation.
Yes, so the last Traffic Safety Commission meeting was in August. We did not have a quorum, so we just had a nice little discussion, things. Next meeting is, I believe, October 17th, so if you have any issues, especially for traffic safety, that's a good place to come to. And also, I was unfortunately on vacation last week during the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Apparently, we have a new staff member that's taking, taking over the reins of that as we work through the code, Historic Preservation Code. So there was a little catching up there to do. They're looking at, at this point, probably, possibly finishing around November. Then there's a process going through the Planning Commission before it gets to. So hopefully, early next year, January, February, we'll actually be seeing this. It's been a long, hard, and they've been working very hard at it, and they're being very diligent about it, but we're gonna get there, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilor Hicks.
Yeah, so we've already kind of had the postmortem about Independence Day as this last one, so I think the only thing I really have to add is, this upcoming year, we're gonna be meeting every second Thursday at 7:00 here. First meeting's gonna be October 11th, so anybody that wants to volunteer, please come. And, yeah.
Great. Mr. Irvine, I think you're filling in for the city manager today. Go ahead and report from there.
Yeah, and I really, I don't have too much to report. I just want to echo your comments about the Hoppin Heritage Block Party and the ghost walk, you know, and also, you know, kudos to IDA. I think they did a really good job putting that event on, and I think it's a great way to reboot that, that event in a, in a way, I think a lot of it can actually be done very effectively, even if it does rain, since they kind of brought a lot of it into the businesses. And then just also, you know, you probably noticed this last weekend, we had the Airstreams downtown. That was another great IDA event, Downtown Association, just real kind of nice spectacle, brought a lot of people downtown, and I think created a lot of opportunity for the downtown businesses.
Great. Wonderful. There's no reason to have long reports, so we're just gonna keep it moving. Mr., I never know how to pronounce your last name correctly, and would you please help me? Pelle?
Pellz.
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 Thank you, and I apologize. I look at it and I just go, and I don't want to just be so informal that we're Zack everywhere, because, you know, you don't.
Zack Pellz, city planner.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So we have an information-only item for you tonight, and that is a request that you'll be seeing at your, at your October meeting to update our committee development fees across the board, actually limited to planning fees and public works fees. We started this project out a few weeks ago, looking at updating our planning fees, and that was in response to some requests from the building community, in fact. So right now, we, as explained in your memo, we have a really low upfront deposit, and then we just bill developers and applicants on a monthly basis for, for the staff time we spend on the applications. And the feedback we've received from applicants in the development community is that that is sort of misrepresentative of the actual fees that they will charge. So we'd like to sort of just adjust that deposit closer in line with the actual fees that they can expect throughout the course, and that's what's reflected in this memo. We also have a number of land use services that we currently provide and do not charge a fee for, so we'd like to capture the time spent on those, and those are shown in those blue boxes at the bottom of Table 1 in your memo. The second piece of the fee update has to do with updating our fees for our public works review, and that's for plan review and inspection services. Right now, we charge a fee only for inspection and not for plan review, so we want to break that out to, to capture the time spent on both of those pieces, and that's outlined in Table 2. I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding those items. Again, this is kind of for your information only. We'll have a formal ordinance for you next month.
Questions for staff at this point?
I actually had a question. So you're not really looking to, other than the additional fees that we have, have charged before, the other fees, you're not really looking to increase the fees, you're looking to just increase the deposit to more closely reflect what the fees will end up being?
That's right. Good point, right. So it won't, the one thing that will change and that will increase is that we're, we've had a 7.5% administrative fee that we added last year, and that was on the initial deposit. We'd like to suggest a 10% administrative fee that gets added to every invoice going forward. We don't think that'll add a significant increase in the cost because we expect that those invoices will be less frequent, right? So if they adjust, if we adjust the deposit to be more reflective of what they'll pay, they'll probably get one or two invoices beyond that, if any. But yeah, so a slight increase is likely.
Additional questions? I do appreciate getting a, an advanced report like this prior to it coming up, so that we get a chance to kind of look at it, chew on it, and then when it comes to council next time. Appreciate that. Okay. Let's continue forward with development code discussions.
Yeah, and this is another informational summary, I guess, of a, of a package of miscellaneous code amendments that we expect to bring before you next month. You'll recall in July of this year, there was a request from one of the residents to amend our regulations to allow vinyl fencing. Staff at that time suggested that we package these up in a consolidated package to make it more efficient, and that's what we're doing. And so we're proposing a small handful of amendments to the code, and those are shown in your memo. For the benefit of the people in the audience, what we're proposing to do is just a general housekeeping, eliminate inconsistencies and scrivener's errors throughout the code, and that's something that we'll plan on doing on an ongoing basis, permit the use of vinyl fences. We'd also like to modify certain Type 1 land use actions, and those would be home occupations, sign permit applications, and property land adjustments, to not require notice to adjacent properties. Right now, they're lumped in this standard Type 1 category that provides a notice to everybody within 250 feet of the property and a 14-day comment period. Staff doesn't really think that that's necessary for those minor types of land use applications and suggests that those specific land use sections not be subject to that noticing. We want to clarify that lodging uses are permitted in our, in our downtown commercial zone and other mixed-use properties, et cetera, et cetera. I guess the other things are not as significant. There's one, I guess the last bullet is worth, is worth mentioning, and that would be to amend the definition for drive-throughs to allow curbside pickup in the downtown overlay district. And this is something that we've discussed internally recently. So in the downtown district, we don't allow drive-throughs, and I suspect that has some sort of aesthetic rationale behind it. We have been getting a couple of requests recently from potential businesses in the downtown that would like to make some sort of compromise in allowing drive-throughs, and it, in staff's opinion, it may make sense to allow a small parking area where those people can pull up and have their products, likely some sort of food or beverage or pharmaceutical type product, delivered to their car, and they can drive off, but there wouldn't be a queue and a drive-up window and an ordering window that's typically associated with the drive-through. So that's what we're thinking with that. So that would be for your consideration, of course. And that's kind of the, that's the extent of what you'll see in that code amendment package next month.
So council, you have the proposals in front of you. Do you have questions for the presenter?
I do.
Please do.
Would the development code also include the city's sign code?
Can you clarify?
Are there aspects of the sign code that fall under this section?
Of the, of the noticing requirement, are you saying?
Of just the, what's allowed and what's not allowed? Or is that a different animal?
Are we talking about the drive, the drive-throughs, or?
No, just, just the sign code in general.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not, with this package, we're not.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying, under the development code, summary of miscellaneous amendments to the development code, would the development code, not these changes, but would the code itself include the sign code?
The, the sign ordinance is, is within the development code, and we, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, so it's zoning rather than development?
They're one in the same, right? So those terms are changed. Our zoning ordinance is the same as our community development code.
Okay. The reason I bring this up is because I was party to a discussion the other day where someone said there was a downtown business that may go out because they couldn't put up a sign.
Okay.
Just trying to follow up on that.
Sure.
I have a question about that. Was it, was it due to being in the historic district, or was it due to the just general?
What I said is everything I heard, so.
Okay.
I don't know any more specifics, and I'm loath to name any names right now.
Okay, sure.
It's likely that it was in the historic district. The downtown is almost entirely in the historic district. I believe it's entirely in it. So, and we are, and I guess that, that helps clarify that question a little bit, because we are amending the Historic Preservation Code separate from this project. That does, that does have amendments to the sign regulations in.
Okay. Is there, there are a variety of different kinds of signs downtown?
Yep. That's right.
There seems to be no real consistency in making it look a certain way.
Right, right. And I'll, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a really good grasp on, on what these amendments to.
I didn't mean to catch you off guard.
Nope, that's no problem at all. You'll see that package of amendments, as Councilor Takeus pointed out, probably at the end of the year, and we can talk in more detail about those specific amendments.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I did. So you made mention of the vinyl fencing in there. Did that go through the Planning Commission?
That has not.
Okay.
So the, the way this is gonna work out, so we were actually scheduled to give this summary to the Planning Commission at their last meeting. We didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't do that. We're gonna give this summary to them at their next meeting, and then we'll just kind of progress that way.
Okay.
But it will go to the, this whole package of proposed amendments will go to the Planning Commission first, and they'll make a recommendation to you, and that modified recommendation will be before you.
Yeah, it was the wording of it, I don't think I, I felt like I was part of wanting to necessarily remove that ordinance. I kind of want, I'm amenable to hearing what the Planning Commission feels on the issue. So I, given the information, it sounded like we were all gung ho.
That was the, and this is, so the direction, and just to clarify, the direction that I am working on right now, and that I understand from July 16th, is that the city council supported that amendment, and that's, that's what will be moving forward. And again, once it comes before you, you can discuss and deliberate the merits of that and decide.
Okay.
Because I know, Mr. Pauls, I know one of the things that we had was a quality issue concern, and so in the revamping of that, was that addressed at all?
We haven't actually come up with, in your speaking with regard to the vinyl fences specifically.
Yes, yes.
So we haven't drafted the language, but what I suspect it will do is it will just, so right now, the only, the only languaging that that prohibits vinyl fences just says that vinyl fencing is prohibited.
Right.
And I'm explaining, I'm removing that, so that vinyl fences are no longer prohibited, and only chain link fences would be prohibited, because that would be the only prohibition. So you could construct a vinyl fence in the same manner as you could construct a wood fence, three and a half feet tall in your front yard and seven feet tall in your rear yard. There would be no other, there's still a fence permit that's required, so there would be some constructibility decisions that are made on the city's behalf.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for, for that information. I'm gonna move on to, we have an ODOT agreement.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. What you have before you is a staff report for the F Street Bridge and an agreement with ODOT. And so the F Street Bridge is on the 800 block, just off, just west of 7th Street. The bridge is around 50 years old. It was derated in the past to seven tons or 14,000 pounds, and that doesn't allow EMS to go over that bridge anymore. And as you know, the city is moving to the south and particularly the southwestern corridor, and that's the area that this bridge stands in. So we've been looking for funding since it was identified in 2015 that it needed to be rebuilt. The city has found a funding partner in ODOT, and tonight, we're asking for you to look at the agreement and enter into agreement for the funding for the bridge. The total replacement for the bridge is roughly $2.4 million. The city's cost in that will be roughly 10%, so about $232,000.
Is that all cash, or could there be in-kind?
That's a great question, Marilyn. I know your copy says in-kind. My copy, I have to revise, and I did not see anything in the agreement that allowed for an in-kind. I can review that again, though.
Okay. But it doesn't say you can't either, does it?
It doesn't.
And one other question in relation to bridges. Are we done with the bridge over on Gun Club? Is that up to the code it's supposed to be?
As far as, I'm not actually sure what the tonnage rating is on that. There, it is, I believe, in our TSP.
Okay.
As this bridge was to be replaced.
Okay.
So I know we have some preliminary work done on that. I believe it's.
You did.
Raise it.
Right.
And so that would probably be the next bridge on our list to approve.
Okay. I am delighted to see the F Street Bridge in here because it's icky.
I like that technical term, icky. Additional, because this is, this is something that we've been informed about for a while. Are there additional questions for staff at this?
Yeah, I've, so, actually, I think what you meant to say was the, our, according to the staff report, our share would be approximately 230,000 to 39,000. Yeah. Okay. And is that coming out, is that out of the capital, the roads capital expense? I think we budgeted 275 for that.
Yeah, it's identified at the CIP.
Yeah.
So the, the numbers are from 2015 for the bridge reconstruction, so, and there's allowance inside the agreement if that price goes up or down.
And, and if it's, if this goes through, is that likely to come out of the 18, 19 budget?
Not 100% now.
Okay, so it could be pushed off to the next year?
The engineering selection process is probably gonna take four to six months.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And the anticipated, when's the work gonna happen? Would you guess?
Probably 2021.
Okay.
It's the ODOT project, I forgot.
Well, just think of all the improvements that could be made to the nice park there.
Right.
And then the bridge will be the crown jewel.
There you go.
So that, that brings up another question, then the 239,000, would that be over the next three years or approximately, or is we have to put a bunch of money upfront, or is that all going to engineering costs, or?
Right now, we, we've actually budgeted for the project, so, and, and most of our portion is actually in this budget here.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how it will break down in the next three fiscal years.
Okay.
But I would expect we will probably try and put our money out first.
Sure.
Get that taken care of.
Okay.
One interesting thing you brought up, though, so the surrounding area, the city has a park there, so we'll have to budget for upgrades to that park as well at the same time. It's outside of this project, but they will be parallel.
Take advantage of the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Additional questions on the F Street Bridge proposal? Sound okay to folks?
It does. May I make a motion?
I would be happy.
I move to approve the F Street Bridge Replacement Project and authorize the city manager to sign the local agency agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Agreement Number 32582.
I have a motion and a second from Diana. Is there further discussion? I just want to offer that I know that this has been a project that we have, that we collectively have worked on for a long, long, long time, and tenacity does bear fruit. And finally, it came through.
It's absolutely been a team effort.
It has, and I want to, I want to recognize staff, both current and past, and staff in the future, too, because it's gonna take a few years to get this done, but this'll be really good. So there's no further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I think you also have the, the next item. Please do.
Don't we have to?
Excuse me.
Don't we have to?
Did I?
To read the proposed ordinance.
Do I have?
That's for the next.
Oh, sorry, I was, I.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Apologies.
Please go ahead.
Reading ahead.
Yeah.
So we have an update to our public works standards that were adopted in, I believe, 2013. As you know, we went through an open engineering and selection process, and the city selected West Tech Engineering. So we went through with them and reviewed our current public work standards, and they had several suggestions, as well as, it had been five years, so it was time to update the ones that had been adopted previously. So after reviewing those with Public Works, planning, building, West Tech, and myself, we put together a new set of standards that we hope we can carry through for the foreseeable future. You have several options in front of you on how we can adopt them.
So do you want to, for the audience, do you want to give any brief comments about what this effectively does by adopting the Public Works Design Standards?
So under option one, if we accept the Public Works Design Standards as presented, adopting the ordinance to place the standards in the municipal code, passing a resolution that adopts the standards and passing a resolution that adopts the related fees. Is that what you're asking?
No, what I'm actually.
Maybe Steve can help me out here.
Thank you. Yes.
Please don't reattach. The attachment you did not include. Thank you.
Steve Ward, West Tech Engineering.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make this real simple. These are Public Works Design Standards, but what I tell every engineer who works
These are public works design standards, but what I tell every engineer who works in any city world, city engineers in several cities, is these don't replace good engineering practices. Okay? Just think about that. I never even look at these if you're doing good engineering. But if you do lousy engineering, I throw the book at you. And so this just basically ensures that the city gets good engineering practices on all of its projects. And, and every city's unique. I'd say probably 85% of this is the same in every city, but every city has their own specific items, as Independence does. They've got several unique things, like they want the same materials for water meters and things like that, so they don't have to stockpile all sorts of different things.
Right.
And so this, this is really a design standard. It's not a construction standard. We're still using APWA, but, but it doesn't replace good engineering practices either. And so it's just a means that we can throw the book at someone if they're doing lousy work. That's all it is.
This is the same kinda thing that every city gets to do on about a five-year basis.
And what'll happen is, we learn from other cities. So Philomath may have a problem on something that, that we just didn't realize was a problem until somebody created a problem, and so we take that practice and run it through all the other cities. We run it by the public works director and say, here's a problem in, in Philomath, and what do you think about making this change? It's pretty much an annual update or something like that that we'll do, just to keep everything up to standards. And, and you're going through a transition right now. For example, there's not water quality required in here, but we know from the work we're doing with you guys, you're gonna start dealing with water quality, so that'll be something that we add when we get the water quality component figured out with the state and all of that.
Just like every other city in Oregon is going through exactly the same thing. So it's not just Independence, it's everybody else.
So did that answer the question you were?
I think, I think so. Are there additional questions for staff?
Uh, yes, I have.
Please do.
Questions. So, uh, on the, on the first, let's see, the Resolution 201803, it mentions West Tech Engineering to be the ones developing, and I was just wondering, I mean, you guys are a great company, I don't wanna say anything bad, but if in the future, for some reason, we part ways and decide to go with another engineering firm, should that maybe read engineering company of record or something like that?
And that's fine. The only, the only thing that I will say to you is that we protect these religiously. And what I mean by that is, you, you didn't pay for the generation of these documents. You paid for the modifications. And so we've copyrighted these, they're owned by West Tech. If you asked us for Word versions so that you can make your own changes, we would say no. Okay? Because we don't want Word versions out, because pretty soon that goes to the, some other city that Kai's friends with and things like that, so we're very protective of these. You can have as many hard copies you want, and you can own them if you want, and you can, as far as I'm concerned, you can scan them and convert them from a scanned doc, PDF document to a Word document, and you can deal with it, but we're not gonna give you Word documents, if that makes sense. Because you, you paid.
So we're stuck with you.
Yeah, yeah. And honestly, you paid very little for this amount of work, which is okay. It's a service we provide, and we provide it to all of our cities. It's just that they're, you're not going to get these to be able to modify yourself in the future. We'll have to have some sort of agreement in the future.
Right, understood.
Well, and I would defer to staff on that issue anyway, so.
Additional questions?
I, that one, I think that's it.
Additional questions on this side? Everybody okay? Everybody okay? Okay, this is an action item, folks, and we do, it is an ordinance, so we get to do the, the.
The trifecta.
The trifecta, yes, if somebody would like to.
Sure.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2018-03 in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, from Councilor Limscog. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 1, Standards Specifications for Public Works Design and Construction to the Independence Municipal Code.
Okay, someone the next?
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2018-03, for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion, second, is there discussion? Here, no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 1, Standards Specifications for Public Works Design and Construction to the Independence Municipal Code.
Please.
I, I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2018-03.
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion. I'm glad we're getting this done. I think it's a good thing, and I really appreciate this work and the other work that, that we're having, that you mentioned that we're having done, just like every other city in Oregon is, is doing the same thing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Bill has passed, we will be signed ordinance number 1568.
Great. Under council announcements.
We have one more thing to do. I move to adopt Resolution 18-1489, adopts public works design standards.
Excuse me, I, I jumped ahead. I have a motion, I have a second, is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Under council announcements, I think Councilor Morton has something for us.
I do. Karen did, oh, these are going out to everybody. May I go ahead and at least paraphrase this?
Please.
Counselors, I've been concerned for a long time that the City of Independence has not been supporting its Chamber of Commerce the way that, that I felt like it should be. We are a joint Chamber of Commerce between Monmouth and Independence. We agreed several years ago, when they opened their visitor's center, to pledge an annual contribution of $4,000, which we did for several years, and then it stopped from this city. This last year, there has been space given to the Chamber of Commerce in order to have an office presence on Main Street in Independence, and that was three hours, two days a week, which is all that they can, they can afford to be over here, because the, the director is, works very hard for little pay. And there is an office on 99, and now the, they have an office presence in downtown Independence. The value of that office, based on $300 a month to rent an office at Indy Commons, and the number of days that our chamber is there, gives that office value, which includes utilities and a, and a, an internet hookup, a value of $1,440. And I would like to suggest that an additional $2,500 per year be devoted to supporting the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce, and I would also invite the chamber director to come, be asked to come to a future meeting and talk about what kind of benefits are